I'd like to throw up again a meeting of just like a member of couple of individuals who serve the city very, very well and died in the past two weeks. Janet Marcus, who served on NRA for a few years and had the pleasure of working with Janet. And also Frank DeSenzio, who was a veteran for many years and during my, during many years of my term, and is also the father of Mayor John Holliday. So I'd like to have the moment to thank both individuals who serve the city.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Cameron.
President.
Counselor Connell.
Present.
Counselor Cronin.
Present.
Counselor Agarwal.
Here.
Counselor Junta.
Present.
Counselor Harkwitz.
Present.
Counselor Hearsaw.
Here.
Counselor Kinsey.
Present.
Counselor Tontar.
Present.
Counselor Vogel.
Present.
Counselor President O'Brien.
Here. Late file items?
There's one late file item, order number two, you'll see on your desk, it is handwritten. My apologies, I didn't have the time to type it to remove any doubt or ambiguity. City Council hereby adopts entirety of chapter 329 of the Acts of 1987, and as I say, including without limitation other chapters. I mean, the gist of it is to vote by a two-thirds majority to increase the total amount appropriated.
I'll move to accept the late file and we'll take it up during the appropriate time.
Set.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
No.
Who is this?
Good evening, Council Presidents, City Councilors. Quick update tonight, first of all, in terms of personnel, it is my pleasure to welcome Heather Rowe, if you could just stand, while I couldn't put her face with the name, is my new chief administrative officer, aka Director of Policy Administration. And she began today, so we have a nice smooth transition in terms of that office. I know that she worked here many, many years ago with Mary Ann Clancy, and Mayor Clancy, and I know she's looking forward to working with all of you on the council, as well as residents in the community. The school budget, as you know, last Monday night, the school committee voted to pass a, a total budget increase of 6.78 percent for the Newburyport School District for FY16. If you recall back in the fall, when according to charter, we had our first joint school committee and city council meeting the forecast for 2020, in terms of our projections for the school budget was a 3.1 percent. And unfortunately, they worked on close to a 7 percent, and I know that last year, we were able to give them an 8.4 percent increase, again, working hard to begin to fund the programs back into the school system that had been cut over the past years. But we need to work together in terms of what the city can afford, in terms of funding the schools. As I had told the school committee members during one of our school committee meetings, that after the first draft budget was done, there was $21,000 left over at the 4 percent rate. We do not have the money to fund this year at the 6.78 percent. This Act also means with this 4 percent increase, that over the last six budgets, this will be a 28 percent increase into the school budgets that my office has given to the schools, which doesn't include any of the capital needs, doesn't include maintenance, snow removal, the hauling of trash. And also, we need to consider, besides the nearly $29 million operating budget, we also carry in a separate line item in the budget, as you know, an additional $4 million to cover benefits to teachers and employees in the schools. So our charter requires that the school committee send the budget to the mayor, their approved budget. And under section 6.3, quote, "The proposed operating budget shall perform a complete fiscal plan, fiscal plan of all city funds and activities, and shall be in the form the mayor deems desirable." The school budget, as adopted by the school committee, shall be submitted to the mayor at least 10 days before the submission of the proposed operating budget to the city council. This is where we ran into problems, because the budget came to the school committee late, it was passed on Monday night, or last, and that gave us, it has to be presented 10 days before I present the budget to you, which my charter is the 15th, which is Friday. So we're up against the wall. I checked, so there was no time to send it back for further deliberation by the school committee. I spoke to our city solicitor, Colm Minnepage, work through interpretation of the budget, and that based on this language, the budget that will be presented to you on Friday for the FY16 budget, the mayor's proposed budget, will include only the 4 percent increase from the schools, to fund the schools. Also, it's important to understand that under no circumstances ever, ever, will I submit an unbalanced budget to the city council. It is fiscally irresponsible, and I will never do that. So I noticed that we have a late file item, which is addressing chapter, Mass. General Law, chapter 44, section 32. That provision allows for the school, the city council to decrease line items, but if you would take the local option under that chapter, which was passed by the Acts of 1987, then the school committee can increase the school budget. Again, keep in mind that there has to be a balance there for what's being increased. Finally, I just would like to, in terms of school budget, would like to talk about the mayor's spring conference last week, where the Senate President was there, Stan Rosenberg, who had a really positive meeting with the mayor, so we spent a lot of time talking about school funding issues. The Senate budget will be released tomorrow, and he is anticipating, instead of the House version of $25 per student increase for chapter 70, it would be 50. That would be something that would be very good for our school district, since we get so little, we get only $2 million in chapter 70 funding. So I'm hoping that that will come through, so we will keep our eye on that budget. He also mentioned that the chapter 70 commission report, that I know many of us went to the hearing in Danhers and testified, that that report will be delayed, but they will receive the executive summary on time. The mayor's discussed at length about charter school funding. The Senate President is one who believes that there should be a separate line item for charter school funding, which would be a relief, because then that 1.9 million that goes right off the top to the charter school then would be part of our chapter 70 funding and would be really, really helpful to the needs of the schools. He also anticipates that the Senate version of the budget will hold on circuit breaker, which is funding for extraordinary special education costs. So I am hopeful that we'll see those things in the budget. The, as I mentioned, the proposed FY16 budget will be available to you on Friday. I'm not sure if it will be in your boxes before City Hall closes at noon, but we will make sure that you have access to those budgets on Friday. Plum Island Water and Sewer sends our last executive session. I have had a one-on-one meeting with the Attorney General, had several phone calls with her, she was also at the mayor's spring campus, had several phone calls with her on Friday afternoon. We also, our team met with our legal team, Ruben and Redmond. So we are solidifying our legal approach. Again, this is something that, don't want to take the time tonight to go back into executive session, but we are moving in a positive direction, and we'll be meeting with our designated lead assistant Attorney General in the next couple of weeks. At that point, then I will come back and give you an update on where we are with our settlement negotiations. And I also saw the almost final draft, it's really close to being finished, we've all been waiting for this for a long time, which is a template for all sidewalk work done across the city. And Wayne Almaral presented it today, and I will have that to you. Includes concrete, different types of brick, the foundation, so there'll be uniformity in terms of sidewalk development. I would also like to recognize Peter Lombardi, one of the last tasks, besides working on the budget with Ethan Manning, was to complete the ASME negotiations, and I think it's a very solid contract, and I see that it's going to budget and finance, and I look forward to reviewing it with your subcommittee, with Heather Rowe, as we move forward. And just also wanted to make mention that on May 27th, the Yankee Clipper Division of the Boy Scouts is holding the mayor's breakfast, where we started this three years ago, to recognize community heroes. This year, it's Mike Costello and Jerry Dorr, the executive director of Turning Point, and Lisa Balchuk, for all the work she did in supporting the crisis on Plum Island. So if you're interested in going, please let me know, we certainly will be having a table there. And finally, I would just like to thank the members of the council and members of the community, who have been so supportive to me and my family at this time of loss. So thank you. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Yes, hello. Diana Carey, 33 Temple Street. I'm here to support my, not my congressman, my councilman.
Not yet.
Jared Agarwal, in his effort to amend the current zoning board regulations, and to try and tighten them up, so that we have a better oversight in the city. Like many of us, I am appalled at the development on Lime Street, which pretends to be, pretends to be a single-family house, and is a monstrosity. And I just want to urge all of you on the council, to please do what you can to tighten up everything that the zoning board does, because I do not personally feel that the zoning board is acting in the best interests of Newburyport right now. And I think many of us are going to wake up one day and discover that the heritage that we say we really hold dear, has been destroyed board by board and block by block. So please, support Jared's effort, and do what you can to really make the zoning board have some teeth. Thank you.
Thank you.
The one consent agenda?
Consent agenda, that consists this evening of the approval of the minutes for the April 27, 2015 meeting. There are no transfers. There are seven communications. First one is the Northeast Fifth Annual Coast Acure, September 12th, that has to be referred to public safety. Next is a letter supporting the proposed Smart Growth District from the Chamber of Commerce, I receive and file. Third is a letter regarding sidewalks and bike paths to Hale Street from, to and from the West End, that's to go to Neighborhood and City Services. Fourth is a block party on Lincoln Street between Beacon and Marlboro, in for approval. Fifth is the ASME negotiations, the tentative agreement details to go to budget and finance. Sixth is a request to present to the city council by Essex Tech High School, to go to two committees, Planning and Development and Public Utilities. And last is a letter from two councilors, Cronin and O'Brien, regarding the health insurance benefits, that's to refer to general government. There are no first reading appointments.
In which state, anything else?
I'd like to remove communication number six.
Anything else?
Motion to approve consent agenda as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? The one to the President. May Jason say?
Motion number six, as I mentioned, is a letter from the Essex Tech High School, who's wishing to present to the city council, a number of topics.
Motion to refer to planning and development.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. President. A member of the local storm surge group, which is a group that's concerned about increasing sea level in our very vulnerable coastline, had a presentation from this group, from, from the Essex Tech High School, and the thought of this constituent who lives in Newburyport as part of storm surges, that would be good for the council to be aware of it, and I thought Planning and Development could host a presentation and post it as a committee of the whole, just to further help the council understand what may be happening in terms of global warming and sea rise. So I simply, we'll put it to this committee, we'll schedule something, make it a committee of the whole, and it's a 45-hour minute, hour presentation, and it'll help us get a little more up to speed. I feel as a council, we haven't really dealt much with some of the issues, you know, certainly Plum Island and Sewer takes precedence, but you know, there's a lot of impacts that may be happening further up the river, so, thank you.
The other discussion? Motion to adjourn, file in motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? May I have a question?
Motion received and filed.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Point of second meeting.
Constance Moss, for Smith Street, to the Batlet Mal Commission, February 1st, 2018.
Do you approve?
Second.
Vogel?
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Agarwal.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Harkwitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hearsaw.
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Order number one.
Order number one is as follows. We are to name the city council, city of Newburyport is follows. The city council of the city of Newburyport hereby approve and authorize the acceptance of land by deed or easements to the city on the so-called wine property, subdivided as the Hamilton Estates Open Space Residential Development. There's a description of the land, the gist of which is that it's .706 plus or minus acres, that's 30,768 square feet. Further, the mayor of city of Newburyport is hereby authorized to act on behalf of the city, and enter into any and all instruments, including acceptance of a deed or easement to the subject land for the purposes of athletic field construction behind the Knock-MoLan school facility, and to take any other actions necessary to execute this acceptance accordingly, submitted, Counselor Robert Cronin.
Excuse me. Motion to suspend the rules and act on this, can you read it tonight?
If they want to read it, so.
Second.
They're not to suspend the rules, just one reading.
I thought I had to go to committee.
What's that?
Doesn't have to go to committee. Then motion will approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Hearsaw.
If I could just ask the sponsor of this to perhaps provide a layman overview, and why did the rush to approve this tonight?
Vogel?
Now, the rush certainly isn't mine, but if you recall the thrilling meeting we had of last, last meeting, where we had an expenditure of approximately $10,250 for 50 percent design of the Knock Fuller Field, that I brought up, wasn't in fact ours at the time. Nonetheless, we, we voted on it unanimously to expend that money, and this is the order that will give us control of, quite frankly, center field. The other part of this is that there is apparently a schedule that the planning office has, and we seem to be at the end of the schedule, but in the loop nonetheless, and they need this tonight, so they can move on making a field for sports. Let it spread.
Yeah.
You just answered my question.
Yeah.
Number in session? All in favor?
Aye.
I think we better vote for it, something to plan. Vogel?
Motion approve on order number one, Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Agarwal.
Yes.
Counselor Harkwitz.
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien.
Yes.
Order number two.
Order number two is the late file, shall I read it, Mr. President?
Yes, please.
To remove any doubt or ambiguity, city council hereby adopts entirety of chapter 329 of the Acts of 1987, including without limitation the ability under section 32 of chapter 44 of the general laws to vote by a two-thirds vote, two-thirds majority, to increase the total amount appropriated for the support of the city schools, or the regional district schools, on recommendation of the school committee, or the regional district school committee, as the case may be, and otherwise consistently with the general laws, jointly submitted, councilors Agarwal, Harkwitz, Kinsey.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I should also say it states effective date, June 1st, 2015.
Discussion?
Mr. President, this is a direct outgrowth of what the mayor sent around in her report. Until I got her email at 4:37 PM, I didn't even know this section of the general laws. So I apologize for the late file. It's not a coincidence that the two people co-sponsoring this with me are on the Joint Committee of Education, and they have an interest in seeing whether, through our budget process, we can possibly keep the budget balanced by two-thirds supermajority vote, cutting something somewhere and adding it to the schools elsewhere. And you can only do that under this chapter if the school committee recommends it, which they have. So that would be the necessity of this order, we have to affirmatively adopt, according to the advice given to us via the mayor, the Department of Revenues, from the Department of Revenues. I will note, there's, the reason why it says to remove all doubt and ambiguity, is because we should have adopted all, it's, it's in for a penny, in for a pound, you either adopt all of the section, or none of the section. So the advice from DOR is a little curious, in that their opinion is that we adopted the ability to cut, but not the ability to add by two-thirds supermajority on recommendation. So that's why we're trying to remove that, and we can do that tonight. It doesn't commit us in any way to doing anything with this power, but it solves, after 28 years, ambiguity that we have that power. And I urge you to vote for it. Thank you.
Counselor Hearsaw?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't object to the concept of this order. However, just prior to convening this council meeting tonight, this council met jointly with the school committee, and there was general conversation around communication and transparency. The people have yet to see this. I only saw, heard about this, to your point, at 4:37 today. So there's no rush to approve this tonight. We could, and my suggestion would be, if you're okay with this, I suggest we refer this to committee, whether it's jointed, budget financed, whatever. The committee meets before the next meeting. The, you know, the first meeting in May gets taken out ahead, gets voted, at least then it's, there's some vetting going on, to your point about curiosity. And to my understanding, as long as this is, if the will of the council is to approve this, as long as it's approved prior to the budget being approved, it's all good. Doesn't need to be approved tonight. Let's talk about it.
If I may respond, we're all up against it, because of the way the budget was adopted, both at the school committee and the fact that the overall budget is going to come to us on the last possible day, May 15th. It's nobody's fault, it's just the way it's played out. And then we have 45 days. Note two things. This requires a two-thirds supermajority, right? So it's also likely, if the mayor were to exercise her veto, we would also have to bring it back and override that veto by a two-thirds supermajority. That's why we have to adopt it tonight. There's no assurance that there won't be a veto, in which case the clock will run out before it can take effect on June 1st. The June 1st effective date is set by the Acts of 1987, we have no control over that.
Vogel?
So motion approved, order number two. Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Agarwal.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Harkwitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hearsaw.
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
One by him?
My apologies, the agenda says, the ordinance number one is office uses at Business Park, which is what it says when you come to it in the packet, or if you notice, it says one. So ordinance number one, ordinance number two in the packet is actually number one, let's follow it and keep confusion at bay. So ordinance number one, according to the agenda, and now according to the packets, the first one in the packet, zoning ordinance to allow office use in the Business Park by special permit. It goes on, there are two, three, four tables.
Motion refer to planning and development.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, I hesitate to introduce any zoning amendments, there are two that I brought in, because we have a zoning consultant. The problem is, the zoning consultant has been under contract now for quite a while, but is not getting to certain things that need to be addressed. So I, the office park, I'm sorry, the business park, it's no longer the industrial park solely, does not allow office uses, either medical offices or general offices of any kind. So in recent years, the zoning board has actually granted use variances, which are highly unusual in Massachusetts. I don't think there's much controversy on the fact that we would want offices in the business park, but with the building boom, as we've heard testimony on going on, we're missing that opportunity, and it doesn't make a lot of sense. So I'd like to get this in the committee, and we can work on the details as soon as we can. Thank you.
Discussion?
Just very briefly, and to the, to the sponsor, there are some other issues related to the Business Park and its present configuration that need to be addressed, and I'm wondering if the sponsor would be opposed to accepting amendments in committee at that time, to, you know, when the committee looks at it, to address some of those other changes regarding density and building height.
No, absolutely, that would be the function of committee. I agree that, also, you should understand, Business Park is used as a shorthand, there are two districts here, the I-1 district and the I-1B. The I-1B is more Parker Street and Graff Road, which is slightly different than inside the body of the park. But you're right, there is, there are some structural, literally, structural problems in the park.
Okay, thank you.
The third discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Whether it's two one, whatever they do.
We'll call it two. Zoning ordinance, amending definitions of two-family, multifamily uses, appendix A zoning, section VE, list of allowable uses. It addresses by description the two-family use, which is number 102, and the multifamily use, which is 103.
Motion refer to planning and development.
Second.
Same thing. The emergency here is, there is an ambiguity in our code. And looking through zoning codes all over Massachusetts, it's very rare that you have to define what a two-family building is, because generally, there's a common sense understanding that it's, you know, side-by-side double house, or, you know, a duplex. We've had more than one, but you heard testimony from Ms. Carey on an especially egregious one at the corner of Prospect and Lime, which is immediately adjacent to the Brown School Gymnasium, where essentially you have two residential buildings that have been built, and they are joined only by some kind of a shed, or, I don't know what to describe it, not habitable space. So it's not what we traditionally understand. That may sound like it's trivia, but it isn't, because usually, you're only allowed to have one residential building per lot. And if you want to get relief from that, you go to the planning board, you get a special permit, there are certain findings they have to make, or you stand on your hind legs and you go to the ZBA and you ask for a lot split. That's how it's normally done. The reason why this is necessary is that, for whatever reason, the ZBA is not interpreting our code that way, and so in recent years, after 70-odd years of having zoning in Newburyport, we're now seeing these weird constructions. All this does is close that loophole, we can work on the language, especially with Gary Calderwood and Peter Burnett, we've already met with about this. Thank you.
The third discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Counselor O'Brien? You want to debate the item? Right beside it.
Aye.
I move to remove item number 10, school department's school expenses to school lunch program.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Move to approve?
Second.
Mr. President, we have transferred from school expenses previously $25,000 to school
lunch. And this is a request from the school department to do the same thing. For at least the past three years, the school lunch program has been running a deficit in the sense that its revenue does not cover the expense of the program. In the past fiscal year, the school department put a $50,000 contingency in the budget to cover the likelihood that there would be a deficit. My understanding is they're projecting somewhere in the range of a $40,000 deficit in school lunch program. Last year, the deficit was $75,000, and the year before, it was $95,000. The school budget, the school lunch budget as a whole runs in the range of $600,000. We get about $115,000 a year in federal and state support for the program. And the problem is that with some of the changing federal mandates on the quality of food, that students are not buying the lunches quite to the degree that was anticipated. So, they're running a deficit.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
This is going to be it, Mr. President.
Any further discussion?
Nothing, sir.
Questions and permits?
Nothing at this time.
Questions to City Service?
Not at this time.
Planning and Development?
Yes, Mr. President. Motion to remove from committee item number five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me get my paper in order. So, this is, it is in your packet. This is the Oleo Woods order. And essentially, this is some final process that is necessary in order for the city to accept the land behind Oleo Woods. I think this was developed maybe four years ago. And in your packet, there's also, there should be a map as well. It's the portion that is a little more to the west of the Woodman open space, so it's pretty extensive. It's almost 40 acres. And again, this was part of the agreement with the, I believe, the planning board and back then, and it's free. We approved it three to zero on committee.
Should I, it's land I think we're accepting, should I read it? I'll summarize. City Council, City of Newburyport hereby approves and authorizes the acceptance of land by deed to the city on the so-called Oleo Woods property. The land contains 39.95 acres on plan and title, OSRD, definitive plan of land, dated March 9, 2011. And secondly, land in Newburyport being shown as parcel A, containing 897 square feet, on a plan prepared by Millennium Engineering, dated March 9, 2011. Further, the mayor is authorized to act on behalf of the city to enter into any and all instruments, including a deed submitted, Counselor Junta. Thank you.
Vogel?
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Agan?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Harkwitz?
Yes.
Counselor Hearsaw?
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Brian?
Yes.
Motion to remove item number five, or excuse me, item number six from committee.
Second.
Aye.
Both?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very similarly, this is an adjoining parcel. This is part of what the council did, approve a zoning change, I think it was last year or two years ago. It gets a little blurry after a while. So, this is the property that was opened up by the potential Tropic Star Development on Story Ave. We met on the, on the 6th and voted in favor of this by three to zero. The planning director was also there, and we did discuss a little bit about, although it's not related to this order specifically, a little bit about the, you know, possible traffic patterns and oversight from the planning board on that. But this essentially would authorize the mayor to make sure that there's a conservation restriction on this land. Again, this is an acceptance that is free and is kind of one of the closing pieces on what we agreed to do when we rezoned that area a couple of years ago. It's a great, great part of open space, and it would be great.
Everyregent follow, City Council approves and authorizes acceptance of a deed on the so-called Woodman property. Sessions map 109, Lot 3A, known as Woodman Open Space on the city map. 20.967 acres. Further, land accepted by the city shall be subject to a conservation restriction to be held by the Essex County Green Belt Association for the purposes of conservation and our continued agricultural operations, may be determined by the city at a future date by lease agreement to the office of the mayor. And then lastly, the mayor's granted certain rights to enter into any and all agreements and lease access. Deed submitted, Counselor Larry Junta.
Vogel?
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Agarman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Harkwitz?
Yes.
Counselor Hearsaw?
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. President, just one thing to report. Well, our committee is going to be holding a joint hearing with the planning board on June 17th, so that's regarding the smart growth zone. And we'll keep that moving along.
Public Safety?
It's motion to remove item one, letter to use Brown Square.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve. Second. District.
On June 7th, Victoria Dutweiler is going to be married. Congratulations, Victoria. And she, her family is asking to use Brown Square. They have the sign-offs, and they have an insurance binder for use of the square for lawn games and bocce. And, okay. So, I urge you to approve.
Any further discussion?
I don't, I don't want to rain on her parade. Is there, is there a fee associated with that for the city, or is it kind of like a parks rental?
That's a park.
Kind of thing?
There's a rent negotiation.
Okay. And we're hopeful that there will be?
No, so.
Okay. Okay.
It's a good thing.
Bocce sounds interesting to me. Yeah. Thank you.
Well, there will be light orders.
Hopefully. I like shrimp.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Motion to remove item four, fourth annual Pan M Challenge.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
This is the fourth annual Mass Pan M Challenge Kids Ride. It is, got no complaints in the past three iterations. This was delayed a little bit under the new policy, but they have the proper sign-offs and insurance binders, everything is as it should be. And it was three, nothing in committee to approve.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Nothing else.
Thank you. All in favor?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing, you report.
What do you want? Counselor Kinsey?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to speak just briefly about probably my favorite part of being a council person. And it's when you've got a moment of, when you think that things are working together and working well and working in a direction that I think a lot of people are hopeful that we're going. A few years ago, a few of us got together and created this little group called Port Pride, and it was a very successful campaign, as is evidenced by the brand-new building in Knock and Senior Community Center. It happened again with the stadium. I am very hopeful. This is a group of 11 people, I think, who really work well together, and I think for the first time, from what I understand, because I've been here very long, that works well with the school committee. And I'm very hopeful that we are going to find a way to address this shortage. I got to sit with Counselor Connell on a superintendent search committee. We found Superintendent Picaro. We were so excited, and we were fully supportive of getting behind her, her vision, that's why we hired her. People don't leave their jobs, they leave their managers. And if we are collectively her manager, so to speak, we don't want to give her a role, a job, and not empower her to do it. There's nothing more demoralizing. And I'm, I need to know that we're going to do everything we can to get behind her, to do her job. We're going to find a way, because where there's a will, there's a way. We will find a way to support this budget, to see this, this vision, to see it through. And I'm glad the 11 of us approved what we did today in the late order, to keep finding ways to come together, get behind the school committee, get behind Superintendent Picaro, and as a team, make this happen. So, I'm just proud of us right now, and I just wanted to give us...